Good evening. We welcome all of you to the April fif-- oh, April. The October 5th Troy City Council Meeting. And it is my pleasure to welcome you here and call them into order. We ask that if you have a cellphone or electronic device that you turn it off. It bothers our sound system, so we appreciate that. Thank you. This evening, we are pleased to have with us Brian Tabert from the Kensington Community Church to give our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Let's pray. Lord, just thank you so much for tonight. I thank you for all the people here. I just pray that, well, first of all, I just thank you for how you've blessed this city of Troy. And I do lift up all the council people here. I thank you for their service to the community and the service of the police officers to the community, Lord. And I just pray that you would bless this night, bless their hands as they work to better this community. And I just pray that I lift this agenda up to you, Lord, and pray that you would guide them in making the right decisions as they go forward with the things they have to cover tonight, Lord. And we just thank you and praise you, and I pray all these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling.
Here.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Here.
Broomfield?
Eisenbacher?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howarlag?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here. Motion passes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Farnum.
Now moved that we excuse Councilwoman Broomfield for being out of the county. Support?
Moved by Councilwoman Fleming and seconded by Councilwoman Eisenbacher that we excuse Councilwoman Christina Broomfield for being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarlag?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'm going to read the same statement that I did last week, but be mindful that it might not be needed to change to the three minutes. But I'm told by the parliamentarian that it has to be done at the beginning of the meeting rather than later on. So, "In order to be mindful of the number of individuals attending tonight's meeting and wishing an opportunity to speak, we will shorten the length of time an individual receives to address City Council from five to three minutes per person, only if needed if it fills in, unless I hear opposition from the council." Is there opposition to this special consideration if needed?
Mayor?
Council-- Mayor Paton Howarlag?
Well, I don't think it's-- I don't think it's needed, and I guess it's all relative. So, that's my comment.
Okay. It was indicated to me that if we were going to do it, we had to have this said at the beginning rather than later on. Mrs. Bartholomew, is that correct?
That's true. You just need to place people on alert that if it is needed, in fact, you could do this.
Right, okay. And we will only do that if it fills in like it did last week, because that way, you know, we had 70 people speak the last time. So, thank you. This evening, we're beginning with a special presentation, and that is the Governor's Cup, the Pistol Team Award to the Troy Police Department. And even though I'm going to go down to the front to be with them, Chief Mayor is going to present the information, and the team is going to carry up the trophy.
Mayor and Council, I'm very proud to present the three members of the Troy Pistol Team, which on September 10th, this Pistol Team won the Class A competition at the Annual Michigan Police Shoot in Jackson, Michigan. As a result, the team was awarded the Governor's Cup for Class A Police Departments, which consists of competing police departments with 100 to 499 employees. It's notable that this is the seventh year in a row that this team has won this trophy. This annual event is sponsored by the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. It's been going on since 1928 at the MSP headquarters in East Lansing. In 1949, the first Governor Cup trophies were awarded to each of the four classes of the competition. The 2009 Pistol Team, which consists of Sergeant Robert Wolf, who's been the Top Gun previously, and he's asked to be able to explain what a Top Gun is because he's so proud of that distinction. Robert?
Myself and other shooters here in the Troy Pistol Team have been fortunate enough to shoot the individual high score for our class, and that's the Top Gun for the class.
Thank you. He's very proud. In addition to being on the Pistol Team, Sergeant Wolf has won that Top Gun award. Officer Craig Fitzpatrick was also on the team. He is unable to be here tonight. I believe he has some childcare issues. Officer Milton Stansberry is here tonight. He's also won the Top Gun in the past. As you can probably figure out, they were very-- they didn't want me to mention that fact. We're very proud of the fact they won the Top Gun. And Officer Patrick McWilliams is also a member of the Pistol Team. He says he's shooting for the Top Gun award next year. Officer Russell Bragg is also on the team. His assignment precludes him from being here tonight to be on television. This team came in first with a score of 1,318 out of a possible 1,500 points. 16 of those shots were placed in the center X of the bullseye. This is quite an accomplishment, and we're very proud of the Pistol Team. Thank you. I believe the team wanted to show the mayor the award a little bit more up close and show the seven places where their name is engraved.
That's when they brought it in. I looked on the-- they're already on the backside of this trophy now, and there are only five there. I say, wait a minute, this is number seven. So, they went to the other side. So, they've been doing this since 1928, even before I was born. And I really think that it's wonderful that our Pistol Team does so well, because we know that that's all part of your training, but for every officer, but it takes special skill to do that. And of course, we all take great pride in our police department and the wonderful accomplishments. So, we thank you on behalf of every-- of the council and the citizens. Thank you. This evening, we begin-- there are no carryover items, but there is a public hearing. And of course, by law, we must take our public hearings first, and that is a zoning ordinance text amendment, ZODA 240, Article 43, BZA provisions. And Brett is going to present for staff. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Great, thank you very much. Good evening, City Council members. The Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, or the BZA, have related but very different roles in the preliminary site plan approval process. As you're aware, the Planning Commission is responsible for reviewing and approving preliminary site plan applications, and the BZA is responsible for considering variance requests when an applicant who seeks preliminary site plan approval requires relief from a zoning ordinance provision. When a preliminary site plan application also requires a variance, the planning-- the zoning ordinance does not require that the Planning Commission have input in the variance application prior to the BZA considering that item. So, what happens is, applications are considered by the BZA without city staff or the Planning Commission having any input in site design or site layout. So, what ZODA 240 is intended to do is amend this, fixes problem. So, what the proposed amendment requires is that applications to the BZA that also require preliminary site plan approval first go to the Planning Commission for consideration. The Planning Commission can take action on the item, however, they cannot approve the preliminary site plan, nor can they make a specific recommendation on the variance itself. So, what the Planning Commission then does is transmits its findings to the BZA. The BZA takes action on the variance request. Then the BZA then transmits its decision to the Planning Commission, who takes final action on the preliminary site plan application. So, what this amendment is intended to do is eliminate the disconnect between the two bodies. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item in August of 2009 and recommended approval, and city management also recommends approval of ZODA 240. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any councilor have questions at this point? Councilwoman Kerwin, I see you saying one.
Just a comment. I'm glad to see this. It really does streamline things, and it's an effort that I know that I've been trying to do for a while.
Great.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and Mr. Reinhardt, you signed up on this item?
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me talk. We're back to normal. We got the whiners out of here last week. The thing that concerns me is that no matter what you're doing between the ADDA, or whatever these people are, can you at least have the street corners built the same?
Mr. Reinhardt, could you talk to the item, please, that we're on?
I am. You're talking about zoning.
The zoning, yes.
And I'm saying that they don't consider blind people, because at four different corners in this city, the places for buses, the places for walks, in four different places. So, how can it be when our greatest brains in the DDA and Planning Commission looks at these plans, and they're all different on every street corner, and you get a blind person, or a handicapped person, or bicyclists coming down? He doesn't know where these things are, because the inconsistency of this city is constant from the start to the bottom, and should put it in plain language, too. Most contracts have to be in plain language, and this city's still doing hocus pocus. And I hope our police consultant can understand to get stuff in plain language for us. And I'm on double, because part-time manager, I'll take up his slack. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this public hearing regarding the Board of Zoning Appeals provisions? Seeing none, I'll return it to the council table. Yes, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Madam Mayor, we've done it for 40 years the other way and had trouble. I'm not sure that this actually fixes it. I think there's-- there may perhaps be a problem with undue influence when the Planning Commission discusses a proposed variance, but I think it's worth trying, because it was difficult the other way. And so, therefore, resolved that the Troy City Council hereby amends Article 63 Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Troy-- no, it's not.
Forty-three.
It's 43. Of the City of Troy zoning ordinance pertaining to the requirement of Planning Commission review for items that require site plan approval and variances prior to being considered by the Board of Zoning Appeals. To read as written in the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment, ZODA 240. City Council public hearing draft as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Support?
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
I'm concerned this is going to add an extra loop in the process, because if I were-- if I had a unique property, as many of the remaining undeveloped properties are very unique, I would want to know before I started designing the project if I'm going to be able to get certain variances. And it seems-- it makes sense to me that we'd ask for deviations before you did the-- before you tried to complete a design, rather than completing the design not knowing which rules exactly are going to absolutely be enforced. That's just the way it appears to me, and the simple approach, I appreciate the fact that we've been doing it the other way for 40 years. I didn't realize that.
Would you like staff to address what the change would do?
The change actually has potentially a positive effect on applications that-- site plan applications that also require a variance, because what often happens is, or actually what pretty much always happens, is the applicant goes to the building department counter, gets a variance application for-- and what we see a lot of is actually multiple variances, two, three, four variances, and the application is not reviewed internally, does not get the full review by city staff that a site plan application would get, even though we know eventually it's coming before the Planning Commission. So, what can happen is, when-- prior to going before the BZA for consideration, when it gets an internal review, perhaps instead of four variances that are required, maybe there's only two. Through review by staff and/or Planning Commission, we can actually make the application smoother, eliminate some variance requirements, and maybe catch-- potentially catch an error or catch something that wasn't identified for the simple review for the variances, because all they're applying for is the variances themselves. It's not a full-- it's not a full-blown review. So, there's a trade-off potentially. I think what you're indicating, Mr. Eisenbacher, is that potentially you're lengthening the process. And that may be-- that may be true. It may add a month, but I think in the long run, the trade-off is better designed and potentially eliminating some variances that are sought.
Do you have an example from recent history that this would apply, where they went for the BZA first instead of the Planning Commission?
Not a specific example where there was an oversight or where there was elimination of a variance, but, you know, we weren't-- we didn't have it in the beginning to do the review. What I-- in my past life, as a consultant before I came to Troy, I worked for communities that had a similar type process, and you kind of hear it from both ends. If the application first goes before Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission approves a site plan contingent on a BZA approval, the BZA feels like their hands are tied, that they have-- if they don't approve the variance, they're essentially denying the site plan. And we have the same situation here, where it goes before BZA first. The planning-- we hear from the Planning Commission that their hands are tied, the die is cast, and they really have no input in design, because a lot of the design elements are already decided upon by the BZA. So, what this does is it gives both boards kind of a kick at the can, if you would. It gives Planning Commission an opportunity for input, potentially improving the site design, then gives BZA input for considering the variance and also having an input into site design, and then bringing it back to the Planning Commission. So, it kind of closes the loop and gets positive impact, input, excuse me, from both boards.
The-- thank you. The Sonic property went through this process, right? They came for their site plan first, and then they went for all their variances.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Further questions on this? Thank you. Mrs-- then we have the resolution on the table. Mrs. Bartholomew, may we have the vote?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
No.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarlag?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. There are no postponed items. That concludes that public hearing, and we're going to go to regular business. And as is our procedure, when someone signs up for an item on the agenda, we call on-- we move that item forward and call on those folks that signed up on that. And we ask that if you sign up on an item, that you talk just about that particular item when you-- if you've signed up for that. So, E3 is the Interlocal Agreement for the Major Case Assistance Team, MCAT. And Mr. Reinhardt, you signed up on this item?
Yes, I spend a great deal on the Internet, and the police activity and the crime activity in this city is going way up. So, we do need something like this. Also, would this-- the $40,000 be a major crime for outside assistance?
This is for working with other groups--
I'm just trying to find what a major crime is.
Well, I'm trying to explain it to you, sir. This is working with other groups within the community. Did you have a chance to read the data that was provided with this item?
Well, I realize the last time you had this, you had the police department in charge of the-- of these type of teams, and now I know why, but I got no further comment. Thank you.
The participating agencies are Auburn Hills, Birmingham, Bloomfield Township, Claussen, and Troy, with provisions for additional agencies through a majority vote of the representatives of the participating agencies. That was the only person that signed up on that item. We'll go back to council table. And Councilwoman Eisenbacher, you have a question on the item, or did you want to do the resolution?
I want to do the resolution first, and I do have a question.
All right.
I'd like to move the resolution as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we approved the resolution as printed in the agenda. And Councilwoman Eisenbacher, you have a question, comment?
Basically, it reflects the question that was just asked, and I personally don't remember through reading through the information what would define a major case. Do we have an easy definition of when it's a major case versus just a simple manner?
Captain Fry can answer that question momentarily.
Thank you.
A major case, as outlined in the agreement-- actually, not in the agreement, but the operations manual, consisted of either a homicide, serial rapist, officer-involved shooting, and then at the request and approval of the board, it could involve any other type of case.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And each of the agencies has one member on the board?
Actually, some of the agencies have two.
Some have two, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question for Captain Fry? Thank you. Further questions on this item? If not, Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarlag?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. E5 has been requested, and that is the amendment of the consent judgment of Pavilions of Troy. And Mrs. Blum, did you want to say something before we open it for comments?
I certainly would be happy to, Mayor. This is an amendment to the consent judgment, and even though it says the Pavilions of Troy, I think it should be clarified that this is not immediately related to the Saco proposal that council was presented with last week. This is actually-- in the audience, we have Mr. Hunter Richardson and also Mr. Rick Ratner, who have shepherded this through. This actually substitutes and makes it so that the PUD agreement that was approved in October of 2007 by city council would supersede the provisions of a consent judgment as to a portion of the property that will be covered by the PUD.
And I have a-- well, I'll save my question until after the audience speaks, okay, because I have a question about that. Mr. Reinhardt, you signed up on this item? I'll call on you now.
That Kmart project's been floating around a long time, so if I've tried to work out different ways to demolish the building to not use taxing-- tax funds. One was talking to the local trade unions to take that building down brick by brick, because we have a long time before we got to build it up again, but it was noted that's one of the most polluted buildings in the city of Troy. And so, as you city decides to take that down, please take careful considerations. That's one of the most polluted buildings in the city, and that's the reason there's such a hard time with that particular building. And also, when I read that amendment, I keep saying, please do it in plain language, because I read this stuff. Now, I can understand it, but there is law that this is a contract. Contracts should be at least in plain English. You can make it hocus pocus you want, but at least have it so the common person can understand it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that was here on this item that wishes to speak at this time? Mr. Richardson or Mr. Ratner? Did you wish to speak, or you're just here to see what happens on the item? Good evening.
Mayor, councilpeople, I didn't come to speak, but basically, you know, this is a carryover from 2007, which basically allows us to develop the North Parcel in accordance with the PUD agreement as opposed to the consent judgment. We now have all the parties to-- that are parties to the consent judgment agreeing to this and are ready to execute this, so we're ready to go, and we appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Blum, I have a question. In agreeing with this amendment, does it do anything to change Cunningham Drive as it's presented?
No, Mayor. That-- this does not specifically address Cunningham Drive. That would be something that you may need to address in the discussion of whether or not you're going to revise the PUD agreement, but it's not called for in this particular amendment.
Okay. And in addition, would passing of this amendment help or hinder any changes in plans for that site?
Actually, Mayor, this will assist in making sure, number one, that there is no confusion. Right now, there's two competing documents. You've got your PUD agreement, which governs a portion of the property, and you also have a consent judgment. So, this clarifies that. In addition, this amendment does provide that each site will be treated separately, so that if one of the other property owners-- there are several property owners that are encompassed within this property, this original 113-acre site, each of those individual property owners will be able to go through the process of seeking any deviations or any amendments to the plans through the normal channels. So, obviously, there'll be notice and an opportunity for the other parties to be heard, but it will not require a seventh or eighth amendment to the consent judgment, where you have to get the consent of all of the parties.
Usually, we get signatures from the other parties beforehand. You spoke to that in your memo. Would you clarify why we did not at this time?
Well, first, time is of the essence. We would really like to have this done as soon as possible. It is a holdover from October of 2007, and it did take quite some time to-- for Mr. Ratner to get the parties and to get it to this form. The other thing, Mayor, is that I do have an email from the council representing Kmart. They have agreed to it, and I have been-- there have been representations that all of the other property owners have agreed to it as well, so.
Have we heard from the Sheffield owners?
Yes, your-- I have not, Your Honor, but Mr. Ratner's here, and I'm sure he could make these statements and the representations. I know that a lot of the changes are from all of the different parties, and that there are changes from each of the entities, so I'm confident that all of them have been consulted and have approved.
Because it's very unusual for me to sign a document without the other party signing first. I would be very hesitant to do that, in fact.
And Mayor, just also, one additional thing. This also, although you would be authorized by the proposed resolution to sign off on it, I also have to sign off, and I will not be signing off on anything until we have the consent of all of the other parties. So, there is an opportunity to make sure that we get that before it's processed and submitted to the court for entry.
Okay. Mr. Ratner, would you like to give us indication of what happened with the other parties? Because this is-- this is different. Because this is, this is different. I usually don't sign these unless they've first been signed by all the parties, and there's no signatures there except-
Thank you. Rick Ratner, 380 North Old Woodward, Birmingham. I understand that, Madam Mayor. In this particular case, we now have an agreement from all of the parties, and all of the changes that were made and all of the different things that were talked about are now put together, and Ms. Bloom has, has approved them. We are in the process of getting those signatures, and the, the city's signature, if you will, will not be complete and not be released by the city until such time as we are able to produce all the signatures of all the parties to Ms. Bloom. There's not a chicken and egg situation, really, but many of the people that are there are ready to sign, and we're circulating it, and of course, that depends on the city. The city is the major player in this, and if the city is okay with it, everything goes forward. As Ms. Bloom said, the city will not deliver any kind of a consent judgment to us or anybody else until such time as they see all the signatures. So really, there's no change in your procedure. It's just that, at this point in time, we're getting them together, and it won't be released until such time as we show them to you.
Thank you. Further questions from council on this? Councilman Eisenbacher? For, for Mr. Ratner or for the-
I don't know who it would be for.
Oh, okay. Would you raise, Mr. Malice, sir? Thank you.
Is this agreement to hold up on the sale of the property?
This is, as I understand it, this is one of the items that needs to be completed prior to anything else occurring. This is a cleanup, and, and actually, it was started in 2007, when you approved the PUD agreement.
Okay, so that's the real urgency.
Do you want to ask Mr. Ratner then, to hold up on the sale of the property?
Sure.
Well, I think Hunter can talk more directly to the sale of the property, and, and, because what we're doing is focusing on completing the PUD.
Okay.
Right.
Briefly, this is an item that BlackRock wants with or without sale.
Okay.
And so, basically, my direction has been, get this done for us. It will, in order to the benefit of the new purchaser, but this is something that we want on behalf of BlackRock.
Thank you.
Thank you. The item is before us. Councilman Fleming?
Please, got a question.
Yes, Councilman Fleming? Do you have a question, or you want to do the resolution?
I was going to move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion, Mayor Pecan-Hollak, did you have a question?
Yes, please. Thank you. I have a question for the city attorney. In reading your memo, it says here somewhere that time is of the essence, and in your mind, why is time of the essence? Seems to contradict previous statements that you've been working on for two years.
A couple of things. First of all, time is of the essence at this point, since there is, there is a prospective request to get a parking deviation from one of the parties to the, in addition, this is something that does need to be completed before the PUD can be processed, and I know that, that there have been, that there is at least a public hearing set for the planning commission to discuss any possible amendments to the PUD agreement. So this is a step that does need to occur before, really, it can move forward.
And who exactly is looking to amend their parking situation?
On information and belief, I believe that it is Sheffield.
And they want more or less parking?
They would like a deviation, which would be consistent with the Big Beaver Corridor study.
And that would be what?
Less parking.
Less parking?
Yes.
There's really not a whole lot going on there right now. I'm surprised that, that this is an issue for anybody. Anyway, the, so what you're saying is that when the PUD is basically, if the PUD is redone and called a modification, then this consent judgment won't need to be amended if this passes tonight?
Correct.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Further questions on this item? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howarlag?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilwoman Beltrameany?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Motion passes. Let me scroll to see the next one that has been, oh, the motion passed. Item is approved. Yeah, next one that was requested was item E9, and let me find it here, just a minute. That are, these are a series of things that are all tied together. It is the proposed Troy City Code ordinance amendments, Chapter 82, Property Maintenance Code, Chapter 48, litter ordinance, Chapter 79, general building regulations, appeal procedures, Chapter 82B, dangerous building ordinance, Chapter 88, nuisance ordinance, and Chapter 89, weak control ordinance. And did staff wish to give us any comments before we call on members of the audience that wish to speak on this?
I think it would be who wants to have Mark Steimack give a recap of where we were and where we are.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. The series of items that are before you this evening have been before you before. There's been a couple of different study meetings on these items. This is basically the, shall we say, driving factor in the series of amendments is the adoption of the new property maintenance code based on the 2006 ICC property maintenance code. With that adoption and the amendments to that base document that we are proposing to adopt, there is another series of ordinance amendments that are suggested to basically consolidate a number of different issues into a single chapter of the city code, that being Chapter 82. The proposals that are before you this evening are ones that have come before you before. The text that is proposed for Chapter 82 is the text that was initially proposed by staff, which also includes the amendments that were brought forward and discussed at meetings of July 6th and September 14th of this year. It is the identical text that was provided as a green item in your agenda at the last meeting of the 28th. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have on the amendments.
Thank you. Council, any questions on the amendments before we call on members of the audience? Councilwoman Kerwin?
I'm going to have a problem with this tonight. I have what Councilmember Palata used to call Hartford, and that's when I look at the cover memo right here, page 60, at the bottom. It says, "The proposed text is identical to the text that was presented to council at your meeting of September 28." I see that here. I also requested a week ago that I receive a hard copy with changes in bold color, so I could really tell the difference. So I received that hard copy when I picked it up on Friday and flipped through it, read the cover page again, no changes. Flipped through it, see no colors. We're in pretty good shape. And then today, I thought, well, just start looking through the pages and see, and am alarmed to find the inclusion of 110. Page nine, the means of appeal. Now, as I recall, I have not seen this language before. As I recall at that meeting, my understanding was a procedure would be developed, not incorporated into the ordinance. This is significantly different ordinance language, and I'm troubled by it. I'm troubled by the idea that in order for the Board of Appeals to take place at all, all five members must be there. So af, are you ready to respond already?
Well, I guess I just have a question. By chance, are you looking at the document that at the bottom of the page says 1993 Boca Property Maintenance Code?
Yes, I am.
That's the current text of the code?
Okay. Okay, then that explains why I'm having problems.
Section, officially, Section 110 in the current proposed text is reserved. There, there is no Section 110 in the current proposed text.
That's my problem.
Okay.
It's my error, and that was in here. I've seen, no, I don't have that. Okay, thank you.
I think part of the problem is, I have the same problems, Mr. Steimack, is trying to compare what we presently had with what we had with the changes, and the reason some of us asked for it in printed changes in color is that it's easy to spot that, you know? Because this is very voluminous, and there've been many changes requested. We must have had at least six meetings on this, and so in order to do a thorough read of what the very latest is, because we're being asked to vote on it now, it was more cumbersome than it need be, I think. That was my feeling.
Yeah, and I, and I, I guess I apologize in part. Part of the reason we included the 1993 Boca Property Maintenance Code in there is that not everyone has that document. It's not available online. Our current Chapter 82 makes, adopts it by reference, but the full text is not there. So many of the questions and discussions that we had over the past meetings was, well, you know, we, we don't like this language, or there's a problem with this language. And, and what I attempted to do in providing that full text of the '93 Property Maintenance Code was to show you, basically, that's the same text that we've been operating under for the last 30 years, and, and at least in my opinion, has been operating without major uproar or incident on that text. But I do understand that it makes it difficult, because you have to put multiple documents together in order to come up with the current text of the ordinance versus the other. I, I will say that, you know, bottom line, this document was originally presented to council in April of this year, and the only revisions that have occurred between that document that was provided in April and the text you have before you here this evening are the changes that were indicated at those two meetings, the July 6th meeting and the September 14th meeting, and the sum total of those is about eight sections of the ordinance and probably the change of, of two paragraphs. So the, we've had lots of discussion, certainly, and it's been good and lively discussion over this, but there hasn't been a whole lot of changes since this item was first brought forward to you in April of this year.
Madam Mayor-
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Point of clarification, then. When it was brought up by my colleague, the idea of an appeals board, which was going to be administrative, is that then procedural at this point, or is that in this policy?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
The provisions regarding the appeals within the property maintenance code officially have not changed. The procedure has not changed. There are administrative appeals to myself through modifications in Section 105. There also are appeals procedures to the Board of Zoning Appeals. One of the companion pieces that we're bringing to you this evening is modifications to Chapter 79, where the procedure and makeup of the Building Code Board of Appeals is proposed to be modified, and that's the changes in Chapter 79. So we're not changing the, the process and procedure within Chapter 82. What we are proposing to do is make changes in Chapter 79, where the establishment and process and procedure for the Building Code Board of Appeals is, is contained.
Still have a question? Go ahead.
I'm just still uncomfortable with it, as I read it, and that's the specific area. That's just one person.
Are there further questions from council on this item? Councilman Eisenbacher?
Honestly, right now, I'm glad to see that one of my colleagues is on the same page as I was back in April when we got this and saw the extreme complexity, the, the level of detail in all the information. And we have been through this six times, I believe, plus I've had a few discussions with staff just to get a much deeper understanding of exactly what it means and how it's interpreted and how it's going to work. I think the original concept of an appeal by Mr. Zerlag created some legal issues, and so the item that we have in our agenda in item C, which is the amendment to Chapter 79, makes it so that there's no conflict of interest between the head of our inspection department, who's in front of us now, and, and him judging what one of the inspectors did. It removes all that conflict and replaces that conflict with the city manager and three residents. So that alleviated a lot of my concerns about making sure that, that the residents who, that residents can't get stuck in the system, that there is a means of appeal, and it'd be as fair as possible.
And it does indicate that three of the residents who shall have a background in training, background training or experience in construction are similar trades, and at least one of them shall be a professional structural or civil engineer of architectural engineering experience, and the residents shall be appointed by the city council for a period of five years. I wanted to clarify that, you know, we're not just picking three residents who want to do this. It's got to be three residents who really have the qualifications to serve as the appeal, so that's why I read that particular section. Yeah, I've always felt that this was voluminous, and I was, my questions through the whole thing have been, in changing it, are we making it better? Are we making it more stringent? Are we making it more lenient? How do we come down, now that all this has been done, Mr. Steimack, how is this going to serve us when we put it all in Chapter 82, correct?
That's what the proposal is, Madam Mayor.
Yes. Okay. Do you want to make some kind of comment about that?
Well, certainly. The consolidation of the regulations certainly is going to provide benefit, not only to staff from an enforcement standpoint, but as well from the community in having all of the provisions in a single location. Right now, depending on what the specific condition is, you may have to look in two, three, four different chapters to find out what I, what they did wrong, what, what the violation was for. When we write our violations, we quite often have to cite different chapters in, in writing the violations. If it's regarding a junk vehicle, it comes out of 88. If it's litter, it comes out of 48. If it's weeds, it comes out of 89. It's, it's just all over the place. So consolidating that into a single, unified, organized, and hopefully understandable location is certainly a benefit to the user in terms of, you know, what do I need to do? What did I do wrong? What are my recourse? And certainly, we think that is a benefit. We also believe that coordinating this also provides some benefit to staff, provides hopefully benefit to the court when we go in to do prosecutions that is more easily understood by them, more identifiable, that they can handle our prosecutions more effectively and more efficiently. You know, there also is better language, more updated language with regards to some of the issues that we've been dealing with. One, just to point, you know, graffiti. Under the current regulations, graffiti is not addressed. It's exterior paint, and the, the current or the proposed language does specifically address graffiti, make it a violation in itself, and require that the owner maintain their property to remove it. That's just one of the, the issues in there. Once again, in dealing with weeds, rather than going to different locations and trying to coordinate efforts between Chapter 89 and between Article 3 of the Property Maintenance Code- Rather than going to different locations and trying to coordinate efforts between chapter 89 and between Article 3 of the Property Maintenance Code, it's all in one location. We also, through the provisions for— with regard to the weeds ordinance, we're a little bit more understanding of areas that are sensitive environmental areas. Under the current provisions of the weed ordinance, cut the weeds everywhere, all the time. Wetlands, preservation areas, woodlands, it basically says they all have to be cut. Now, from a practice, we have not enforced it that way, especially when we deal with wetlands and woodlands. But we had no specific language that dealt with that. And now we've incorporated that into the ordinance so that there's a more understandable and uniform treatment.
Thank you. Other questions from council?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Eisenbacher?
I actually received a call from a resident today, which surprised me, about a Property Maintenance Code violation. And she asked me if anything in the ordinance, does it allow an inspector to go into a person's backyard, fenced backyard, without permission?
Oh, we got an email.
Well, the ordinance does have the section on right of entry. The inspector has the ability to enter a property. If that entry is refused, they have the right, as provided for by law, to seek a search warrant if that's necessary. I also got a copy of the email that I think you're referring to. The property owner in question, this isn't the first time that they were cited for junk vehicles on the property. As most recently is May of this year, they were cited for unlicensed and operable vehicles. Unfortunately, the enforcement officer that wrote the violation was not in today, so I was not able to determine how he was able to identify the violations, whether it was from the street, whether it was from the adjacent property, whether it was based on his observations of the past violations that we've written.
But just to the simple question, are they allowed to enter a fenced area without permission or a search warrant? Or is it not clear?
Well, they have the right to enter. The property owner has the right to refuse that entry. I mean, if they haven't jumped the fence, that would—that would be outside of their—
I see Mrs. Bloom saying—
Yeah, if I may, Mayor. This is a situation where, again, if the code enforcement officer does have reasonable grounds to believe that there is a violation, they can go to the court and seek an administrative search warrant. You have to meet the standards for getting a search warrant. But— but Mr. Steinbach is correct in that they may be able to observe the violation from another person's yard. A neighbor may invite them in. You know, there are a number of other ways that violations can be discovered. So—
Okay. So you're not allowed to just enter without permission?
Yeah, I mean, it would be part of the curtailage, yes, and we would certainly refrain from going in there if there was no consent.
Further questions for Mr. Steinbach? Thank you, Mr. Steinbach.
Thank you.
Marv Reinhardt, you want to speak on this item?
Yes, as your person over there said, it's so complicated that it takes a genius to figure out what you guys have just been working on all this time. That's pretty sad, okay? Tax money's tight. You need some help? I work on this all the time. I'm a dungeons master. I've worked out hundreds of complicated computations to make everybody happy. Two, the makeup of the board, I think, is very conflict of interest because you hold that man's salary. If that man sits on the board the day that you decided not to build something. So how can that man honestly say, "Build it anyway"? To me, that's a very conflict of interest. And I'll—I'll—I'll take a note of it and ask more than one person. How can the city manager sit on an appeals board after you people said no? That's like, please, say, "Please fire me." That's what it sounds like. And then you said, "These people got to have credentials." I've talked to you, building department, about other people who have done work in this city. They don't have time to check credentials, they said. We don't check credentials, we just take their word for it. So when you sit up there saying, "Well, we're going to have credentials." I've already talked to these people. They don't have time to check for it done. But I do. I know who's fake in this city. Rest assured, I know who's fake. And you also skipped E8. I don't know if I missed it, but I tried to talk about E8.
Oh, I didn't see it on here.
Well, I might have missed it because, you know, I missed last week and I'm trying to make it up. And Wade, my name's Marv Reinhardt, by the way.
Thank you. Yes, that's Mr. Reinhardt, thank you. Further, anyone else on this item? Further questions, council? The—it's a whole series of items. A through F. Yes, Councilwoman Bloom.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I know that Councilwoman Broomfield had quite a few questions on these things. I'm just curious if—I know she's not here tonight to speak. I'm curious if all of her issues were addressed. And I'm asking, I guess, the city manager, if in his opinion, all of her points have been addressed in this.
Mr. Zerlag?
My recollection is that the primary concern of councilwoman Broomfield had to do with the appellate process. And that's now been addressed because it's been tie-barred. The makeup of the board of appeals now has been tie-barred with the other issues. There were some conversations that Mrs. Broomfield had, I know, with our attorney, I think, as well as Mr. Steinbach. I can't address those issues in particular, I'm sure they can.
Mayor, if I may just supplement. I did speak with Councilwoman Broomfield after telling her the approach to amend chapter 79 for the appellate issue. And after hearing what the approach was, she did approve of that approach. And she also indicated that she would be able to review the language ahead of time. It would be in the council packet and that she would get in touch with us if she had some concerns. So I have not heard anything from her.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Kirwin?
Then I just want that clarified on the appellate issue. Is the appellate process the one that was just cited in the original Boca? Or is the appellate issue now administrative, going through the city manager in that process?
It's—the city manager plus the three—it's a group, it's not just—
I just want to hear— I need assurances from those folks.
Yes, Mrs. Bloom.
It is the chapter 79, which is a different composition of the Building Code Board of Appeals. And appeals from the Property Maintenance Code can be taken to the Building Code Board of Appeals. There are other options as well, but that is one of the options. It's not the city manager exclusively. It's the city manager as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals.
Yes, Councilwoman Broomfield—Beltzmann?
It is my understanding that notices of dangerous buildings are appealed directly to city council, not to the Building Code Board of—okay. Thank you.
Yes, that's—that's still in that provision. Further discussion? Are you ready for motion? We don't have a motion on the table yet.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltzmann?
I would move to approve the entire resolution, sections A through F, as presented.
Do we have a second? I will second the item to get it on the table.
We could do it by section. It might be easier. You've done it now.
This got—moved by Councilwoman Beltzmann, seconded by the chair, that we approve items A through F. I guess, print it. Discussion. The vote? Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Howrak?
Yes.
Kirwin? Yes. Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltzmann?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Lanning?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Reinhardt, did you indicate E8? I can go back to that.
Yes.
Okay. E8. The bid waiver, sole source purchase, top dress materials. Was there anything from—just one second, Mr. Reinhardt. Was there anything from staff on this before we—
Carol Anderson is meeting here. We have to the microphone.
Okay.
She can give you a brief history of what we're doing or answer any questions that you may have.
I know we don't always have a presentation on staff on each item, but just in case there were anything, do you want to just be available for questions rather than present? Or what do you—what do you prefer, Mr. Zerlag?
I would prefer that we be available to answer any questions.
Okay. Because we did get all the written data. I didn't mean to imply we had to have a presentation. Okay. We have a member of the audience that has requested this. So, Mr. Reinhardt, would you come forward, please? This is on E8.
Yes, following the report of gloom and doom that we got to sell our golf courses and all that. I don't know why we got to be building golf ranges inside these things. When you sell something, you don't try to improve it just before you sell it. Now, there seems to be a conflict of problems in this city. How in the world can we be building driving ranges in this city when we can't even do other things in the city that's more important than driving ranges? Because pretty soon, we're going to turn the Aqua Center into a driving range. How many do we need in this city? I think the city—something's wrong with the thinking of this city. If you live north of 16 Mile, you don't even belong in the city. According—I represent about 1,000 votes, Wade, because you don't know my name according to paper.
Mr. Reinhardt, let's just talk about the issue.
I want him to remember my name because he makes—he acts like I don't come up here every two weeks. He talks to the paper, someone monopolizes it. Well, he's going to remember my name all day long tomorrow because I'm going to make sure of it on the K section. But all I now know, why are we building driving ranges in this city when we can't even support the library? What's wrong with this city? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Is there anyone else that wants to ask about this item? Okay. This is an item that is— I don't know how often this has come up as far as the—
Ever.
You know, the usual—
First time ever.
Yeah.
That's why I'm trying to remember this from other times, of this particular item. So that's why I asked if staff wanted to do any clarification. So perhaps council members would have a question and then Mrs. Anderson could respond on that and might clarify all this forth. Councilman Eisenbacher, you want to go first?
Two questions, please, real quick. First one is addressing Mr. Reinhardt's concern. It's my understanding that we're not building anything new. This is maintenance of all existing.
That is correct.
Okay, so nothing new is being built.
Current operational costs.
Okay. Second question is, is part of our discussions has been that we're going to look at bidding out the operations of the golf course. I'm concerned about entering into any multi-year contract with suppliers if we're going to bid it because that would be binding the hands of a supplier who may have a economy of scale.
The—thank you for that question. We are absolutely looking at contract proposals for the golf courses. This is for current costs and this would be considered a blanket purchase order, not to exceed amount, and would only be used as we purchase. It would not be a multi-year contract. It would be only as purchased material.
Okay, so it's basically a senior—single year with future option? Or current need?
We would not—we would not enter into any long-term contract that would not allow us to only pay for what we use.
Okay.
I think the clarification is that—this is a top dressing material that's used essentially annually. And if there were to be a private sector firm that could do maintenance of the golf course more cost-effective than we could do, then we—then that company would also have to have some sort of a top dressing. It would behoove them to use the same company that we're using because it's the same material, which makes for a better maintenance thereafter. If we don't privatize, it is found to be more cost-effective to retain the O and M services and house as it was in 2005, then we would not come back to city council for another resolution next year because this resolution would allow us to have ongoing maintenance. That's how I read the resolution, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor?
Mayor Pretend Howrak?
You know, I don't—I don't—this is a little frustrating to me because the intent of what you're trying to do, I have no issue with. But the problem I have is the process. And in accordance with the charter and with our ordinances, if we're going to not bid these things out, then we need to actually specify why. I think you're almost there. Unfortunately, it hasn't been addressed in our memo, which has very limited information, what specifically the material is and if there are any possible substitutes that may be equal or better or better cost for the value—value for the money. And there's no timeframe on the resolution. And I believe that the resolution needs to address the fiscal years ending in June 30, 2010. And therefore, subsequent to that or prior to that, if you needed to continue it, you would need another resolution to authorize you. And then the final paragraph that says, "Be it further resolved," that the city council hereby confirms purchases totaling an estimated $3,200 over the approved administrative limit. There's just a lack of information. And the dollar value is less the concern than the process because we need to continue to adhere to the requirements for purchasing as specifically laid out very succinctly in the city charter. So if it'd be possible to wait until the next meeting to have better language, I'd be happy.
Mr. Zerlag?
I'm going to say we can wait till the next meeting unless Carol Anderson says there's a problem with the weather. If it'll give you all a better zone of comfort, we can have a one-year approval of this and come back the following year for an approval. I too had the same question, Mr. Howrak, on what is identical material and what is the general practice of top dressing? And as a result of that, some further research was done to Oakland County and their 27 golf courses, as well as a private sector course, Pine Trace. And they both use the same practice of using the same material as long as it is available for top dress. So if you have a better zone of comfort, I'll be happy to come back with a one-year approval.
Is there—is there—you mean, you're suggesting this item not come back to us at the next meeting?
Well, I can—that's up to you. If you want, we can—we can make it. If Mrs. Anderson says that she requires this to be done tonight for weather reasons, then I would ask that we do it for a year. And come back next year, if you will. If there's time, we can go back and look at the process and answer it more detail, Mr. Howrak's questions.
Mrs. Anderson?
We—we can certainly revise the resolution to have it ending at June 30.
Okay. If the requested information can be there for the meeting on the 19th, and then we could get—we could do it this year. I think the whole idea behind this is to make sure that the golf course stays in good condition so that when the decision's made about what we're going to do with it, it still is that, you know, we want it the best condition it can be. So I think that's—that's the question, so. Which—we—you're withdrawing the site for the—
I can certainly withdraw it and—but—
Next week.
Again, we'll come back for one year. Is it—are there any other questions that you'd like answered in terms of using the same material? You want to know what the material is?
Mayor?
Mayor Pretend Howrak?
If you can, I mean, anything that you have, if you can just give to us. But like I said, I'm fine with the direction. I just want to make sure that our process is a little bit cleaner and I certainly appreciate your help. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor.
That makes sense. Councilor Kirwin?
Did give me a chance to Google up perched water table, which came up immediately. So I do see that we have a pressing issue with our perched water table. And I'm wondering if the two-week delay will cause any— that's—the real question.
Mrs. Anderson?
I think in light of the questions that were asked, it would be in our best interest to be able to answer those questions at the—at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then we'll go back to the regular sequence of the regular business. There are appointments this evening, but there are nominations for boards and committees. There are appointments this evening, but there are nominations for boards and committees, City Council nominations. And I'll call on Mayor Potem Haralak and then any other council members that have the exhibition straight forward. Mayor Potem Haralak?
Thank you, and certainly I am willing to answer any questions that council might have with respect to the two open seats. So, I'm going to bring forward the following names. For the Advisory Committee for Senior Citizens, for the unexpired term ending on April 30, 2012, Dorothy Pietron. All three to be reappointed to the Ethnic Issues Advisory Board, those being Ruben Ellis, Kelly Jones, and Maeda Bakori. For the Personnel Board, unexpired term ending April 30, 2011, Mr. Jerry Stager.
Any others?
That is it, Mayor.
Moved by, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Potem Haralak, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we move for, we forward the names for nomination for Advisory Committee for Senior Citizens, Dorothy Pietron for Ethnic Issues Advisory Board, Ruben Ellis, Kelly Jones, and Maya Bakori for the Personnel Board, an expired term ending 4/30/2011, Gerald Stager. I have a comment with regard the Personnel Board, and I have not, I'm not saying this in a negative way in any way against the person whose name was forwarded, but I did have some citizen contact me of interest of being on the Personnel Board, but I wasn't ready to bring the name forward tonight because I didn't have all the information. And so, if council would indulge me, if we could wait on the Personnel Board until the meeting of the 19th, then I could duly inquire of that person if they were interested, and if not, then we just go forward as we are. There's council's pleasure on that.
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Honestly, I'd like to wrap up as much business as possible between the councils or not throwing a bunch of stuff over, just as a general interest.
But this would be for the meeting of the 19th, which, the next meeting?
The next, okay.
Yeah, the next regular meeting.
Well, that's when we'd vote on the person anyways, right?
Yes.
We're just nominating tonight.
Just nominating tonight.
Then we could substitute at the next meeting if you wanted.
Yes.
Or add, yeah.
Or add.
Yeah, we're just nominating tonight, so it's fine.
Would I be able to add a name at the meeting on the 19th when we're going to actually vote to appoint? Or must it be through the nomination and then come to Mrs. Bartholomew?
The correct procedure would be to suspend the rolls.
Okay.
And it is a dual thing.
All right, okay. So, if that other person is interested, then I can ask for suspension of roles and assert that name. Would that be the most, yes, Mayor Potem Haralak?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that my intent was, and I spoke with Cheryl in the clerk's office, because I wanted to ascertain which of the folks that were on these lists were not already on another committee. And Dorothy Pietron and Jerry Stager were the only two that were on those two committees, the list of people kind of in the queue, if you will, that weren't already on another committee. And I had no qualms about nominating them, so that's, that's why they're here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the motion that is before us, Mr. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Haralak?
Yes.
Motion passes. E3, we've taken care of. E4 is the bid waiver for casualty property insurance, two-year renewal, the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority for November 2009, 10 to November 2010 to '11.
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
I will move the resolution as presented.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilman Beltramini, that we approve the resolution as presented. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Haralak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. E6, City of Troy versus UEOS Troy LLC et al.
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
First thing I'd do is say that UEOS is Uncle Ed's Oil Shop.
Right.
And I will move the resolution as presented.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as presented. Thank you. I was just reading it out here.
Yeah.
Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Haralak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. E7, Soul Source East Jordan Iron Works Complete Hydrant and Valve Repair Parts.
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
I'd like to move the resolution as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilman Beltramini, that we approve the resolution as presented. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Haralak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes the regular business items. We will go now to items that are not on the agenda, public comment, limited to items that are not on the agenda. James Savage and Marv Reinhardt, both asked to speak. So, Mr. Savage, would you come forward?
I ask that that be amended or taken off at that point.
I'm sorry.
I ask that that be taken off at that point, at this point, because I believe my comments are more concerning the K item.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah, my comment is this. The City of Troy started off in 1955 as a township that was under attack by the surrounding cities, Closet, Birmingham, Bloomfield, Royal Oak, Madison Heights, who were planning a complete land grab of all business in Troy, all shopping areas and all prime home areas. Few group of people founded the city overnight with the objective of many. Some of those people are on the DDA today. They're on our planning boards and other civic boards inside this city actively trying to destroy the city due to the fact what the city looks like today. No one can make a city look like this today unless it was pre-planned by people who wanted this city to be dissolved. As our part-time manager for life has said last week, this city is suddenly bankrupt and might dissolve library systems, golf courses, and whatever. And this city's already was subdivided once, hence that's why I-75 splits this city like it does today. Without some action, as Troy is already pulling out of Oakland County, we're getting some of our services from Macomb County now. That, to me, is sort of strange, and I do talk to Patterson, why Troy doesn't want to use any Oakland County services and plans to use there. Also, extent making that tunnel through that, underneath that railroad track from 14 feet to 15 feet is going to add a whole bunch of extra money just so bicyclists can ride through that tunnel. Why can't they get off the bike and walk and watch out for the handicapped people? Because they've got to ride their bike. You look at the thing, they've got to put extra handicap stuff in there to worry about handicapped people being hit. Now, I just want to know, where's the path that these people built last year? We gave them hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a path. We had all these people in here. Where's that path? We gave them $200,000. That $40,000 missing from the police department ain't nothing compared to the $200,000 that this group took, and I don't know what path happened in Troy. Does anybody know what path was built with the money you gave out this year? Nobody cares because nobody watches out for this city because it's just tax money. And I'm with you, Mayor. I think these people need a big tax hike because we've got money to burn. Thank you much. And I won't be here for the K section. I'll let these guys handle that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that's here on items that are not on the agenda? Yes, sir, would you come forward? I remember you. You're from Sterling Heights?
Yes, good evening. Jerry Share, 12927 Dax, Sterling Heights. Question I have, I work right by 16 Mile and Rochester Road, and I would like to know, or I don't know if you can answer it tonight, what is that project going to be complete, the construction project there? And many of the people that work in that area that we don't live in the city, we want to know how much was spent on that corner because personally, I've got to say that we don't know why it was done the way it was, the way you're doing it right now. We think the money was wasteful, the way the money was spent, because the corner was fine. I don't know what you're adding. I heard something last week regarding a fountain, and that may be wrong, but we can't believe you added the red to the cement and all the rest, and we think the money could have been used wisely somewhere else in the community. So, if you can answer those questions, thank you.
Anyone else? Items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we do have the consent agenda to deal with, but could we take a five-minute break, please?
Sure.
Okay. Or do you can? Five? Five, five-minute break, and then we'll return. We have the consent agenda, and then we'll go to the K item.[1311.15] Agenda? Is there council members? Do you have any consent agenda items that you wish to have exempted? Who's messing with our sound system? Any?
Mayor.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Hearing none resolved that all items as presented on consent agenda are hereby approved as presented at the.
Support.
Shall be considered after consent agenda items at this point. Oh, yes, it is.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilman Kerwin, that we approve in one motion all the consent items at this time. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
I'd just like to congratulate our purchasing procurement department for getting more items at much less than anticipated, again, for another week.
Yes.
Sign of the depreciation of costs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilman Fleming?
Yes.
Harlock?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilor Bellamy?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Council referrals, council comments? I have one. The firehouse, six firehouses in Troy had open house this past Sunday. Even though it rained a little off and on, they were well attended. And those that attended enjoyed learning more about our great volunteer fire department. And of course, the kids enjoyed the equipment and seeing up close and personal that equipment that serves us so well in the fire department. So I congratulate the fire department again on their open house and the Women's Firefighters Auxiliary Association for their assistance. Any other council comments?
Mayor.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
I'd just like to address the questions that were posed during resident comments. I'd like to ask staff for the sidewalks and the improvement at Big Beaver and Rochester. When's the anticipated completion date? If you guys have it handy, how much is it costing? And then have we dispersed any funds for bike paths and paths in general so far this year?
I can answer some of the questions relating to Big Beaver and Rochester. It's $1.6 million for the total cost.
$1.6 million?
Yes. And I'll add in that there is not a following. There's an aerator, and it was an existing aerator which is going to be reused. And I believe, and I don't know the exact date, but I believe the completion date is next after the winter.
So the plantings, basically?
Yeah, well, yeah, to complete the park area. But I don't know the exact date. I'd have to ask Mr. Vanda.
Okay. Thank you. Other council comments?
Well, the bike paths.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, the bike paths.
I don't think we spent anything.
Mayor City Council, the only money we have spent on the bike paths, I believe, is for plan, design, no other construction or costs associated with them.
Just the plan. Okay. Good. That was my recollection also. Thank you. Okay. Yes, one more?
If no one else had any comments. I received some questions from a resident. I want to really quickly ask these questions. There's no way we're going to be able to get answers this evening. But basically, a resident asked me these questions, and I had no idea.
Are these to go with IMK?
No, no, this is separate.
Okay.
This is in general. And so the first question was, is why do Troy property tax bills not include a dollar sign? And he had asked this question of the staff, and the answer he received was that it saves ink. And I don't think that's necessarily the whole answer. And I was really curious about this. I pulled out my tax bill, and there was no dollar sign, which surprised me. So then I looked at all my other bills, mortgage bill, water bill, sewer bill, telephone bills, electric bills, natural gas, credit card bills, and they all had dollar signs. So I'm just curious, why is our.
Dollar sign before the amount.
Yeah. Why is there no dollar sign on the tax bill? Is there a reason? And then he asked me.
Do you want to get the answer? One at a time here, or not?
I don't think we want to do it tonight necessarily.
Yeah. Mayor, I was going to suggest that perhaps we could address that because I have also met with the individual who had sent the information. He's given me a packet of information as well. And it's more complicated than just that it saves ink. So we'd like the opportunity to.
So all of these items, then, Mrs. Bloom, you're going to, and Mr. Zerlag, and then get the answers to that person? Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. City administration can address some of the concerns that are probably. I have not had an opportunity to read through this, but I'm assuming that city administration can address some of these concerns and provide some background information for you as well.
Okay. And then, well, the second question was, is in our Constitution, Article One, Section 10, it says, "No state shall make things but gold and silver coin a tender in payment of debts." And I know we went off the silver standard in 1971. So I'm curious what changed legally to allow us to accept the current unbacked money. And then there's a section of state law that requires all governmental employees to have an oath of office. And I'm curious if that's still in effect. And then the fourth question is, real quick, is there a contract that Troy property owners entered into that binds the owner to the property tax liability? And then what the definition of a mill is in 1955 when we established our charter? So, thank you.
Okay. Any other council comments, questions? Okay. Our next order of business is the study item, which is a continuation of discussion of the six-year organizational restructuring plan. And council and audience has them too, I think, the yellow.
There should be a PowerPoint presentation that you have. And there was also some yellow memoranda that serves as backup to the presentation.
Okay.
And if you're, are you ready for this?
Yes.
Okay. This is a continuation of the six-year organizational plan that was discussed last Monday.
Excuse me. Are we staying, we're staying in here? We're not going in the other room, correct?
I think it would be, given the people in the audience, I think it would be more comfortable to stay here.
Okay. That's fine.
And it's a complex issue. I'm not sure, aside from Oakman County and the city of Troy, who else is going to this endeavor or doing this endeavor at this point in time. But eventually, every city will be doing this in a more tightened timeframe. Tonight, I'd like to have Assistant City Manager Lamorato kick off the conversation and take care of the first part of the PowerPoint presentation, answer questions that were addressed last Monday. Additionally, Peggy Sears, our HR Director, will talk about changes that were made to the organization over the past six years, as well as concessions by employees and also programs that we've had in place that save money and that have been in place for the past several years, sometimes over a decade. I'll talk to the actual expenditure line that we spoke about yesterday, or last Monday, with a little more specificity on the non-police and fire departments. And then Mrs. Bartholomew, our city clerk, will address questions about the timelines should the council decide to ask the voters if they wanted to have a millage increase. So if that's acceptable, we'll start off with Mr. Lamorato.
I don't know whether it's me or the acoustics in here tonight. I'm having trouble hearing you, Mr. Zerlag. And we turned it up as loud as.
I'm sorry. My voice is not what it used to be.
Okay.
I'll try to speak a little louder. My apologies.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lamorato?
I'm Mayor City Council. What we're going to start off with tonight are responses to requests for more information from last week's meeting. And what comes up often during budget discussions, what portion of a residential tax bill goes to the city. Basically, 27% of the taxes, or 27 cents on every dollar paid in taxes, goes to the city. To reinforce that fact throughout City Hall and also in our tax bill to all residents who receive tax bills and so forth, our dollar bill is on there to let them know that 27% of your tax dollars goes to the city of Troy. We are the tax collection agency for all jurisdictions, including the county, school districts, intermediate school districts. So everybody comes to the city to pay their taxes, our portion of it is 27 cents on each dollar. Taking a look at the average homeowner's total tax bill for 2010. Our current total tax bill on the average taxpayer is $4,116. Of that amount, $1,114 is for the city. Based on our estimates for next year, 2011, the average homeowner, their tax bill will go down to $3,532, and the city portion will be $956, a reduction of $158 for city taxes for the average homeowner. The next slide is regarding the DDA and provide five-year projections for the DDA based on our new property taxes. Sorry, it's a little hard to read, but hopefully everybody has their copies and council has a copy of the handout, the PowerPoint. But the DDA generates its tax revenue by applying the millage rates of the city, the county, and the community college to the captured taxable value within the district. And that is determined by subtracting our initial base value from the current taxable value. The total tax rate of $15.51 that is collected by the DDA is broken down. The city contributes $9.28, the county $4.65, and the community college $1.58, for a total of 15.51 mills. Of that amount, the city roughly generates about 60% of the revenue for the DDA. In 2010, that amounted to a little over $2 million. The county contributed a little over $1 million, and the community college about $350,000 for total taxes of about 3.4 million. As can be seen from the chart, the DDA will not have enough revenue to pay for its annual debt payments beginning in 2014. These are scheduled out based on our new revised numbers from the equalization in our assessing office. And some of the assumptions that are used is that there will be no new construction in the downtown district. If there is any new construction, that will then help the matters out here in the collection of tax increments. We also have a one-years of debt payments in reserve as required by bond indentures. So there is another one year of payments in reserve for our bond payments. I'd just like to talk a little bit about two main reasons why the DDA is being hit so hard next year and the next four to five years, that the DDA's taxable value is already almost equal to its assessed value throughout the district. 88% of the DDA is in the commercial class, and that also makes up 98% of the DDA's value. 2% of the DDA is zoned industrial, and 10% is residential, which only makes up 0.17% of the total value. So the captured taxable value is being eroded by the large reductions in market value of the commercial property. For 2011, we're estimating a 17% reduction in the assessed value of the commercial property. And since most of that is, in the DDA anyways, most of that is commercial, that's why you're seeing a very large impact going forward, using our same assumptions that we have for the city outright. The captured taxable value of the district, which is largely commercial, can be affected by a large company moving out, reductions in personal property taxes, the state changes and how we calculate that, and also Michigan Tax Tribunal adjustments and awards. As we're all aware, once a company, if a company were to move out and that property value is lowered dramatically, the only way that could increase, even if that property, let's say it becomes vacant, that property has dropped substantially, the value on that property. The next year, that building could be 100% occupied. We are only able to capture the cost of the CPI increase for that next year according to Proposal A. And for this next year, if we had that situation, it's basically a negative adjustment anyway, so there'd be no increase, even if that building were to become 100% occupied. So that does hurt especially in the district. We have some major buildings, some people have moved out, companies have moved out. That property adjustment is lower, and it takes, it basically will never recover utilizing Proposal A. Just an example of what has happened in the taxable value and our captured value over the last several years. In 2010, we had a 10% reduction in the taxable, captured taxable value. And overall, citywide, we had a little less than 2% citywide. 2009, we had a 0.7% increase. 2008, 4.1% increase. 2007, a 0.3% decrease. 2006, about a 4% increase. And 2005, a 12% decrease. So it does fluctuate, and a lot of it's dependent on people moving in and out, and also some personal property, changes that were made by the state. This next chart is still a five-year projection, but the assumptions that are used here is that there's, once again, there's still no new construction, but there is additional two mills that the city, that the voters were to vote for a two-mill increase, capturing that two mills in the district. That would, even with a two-mill increase in the city tax rate, there still isn't enough revenue to cover debt payments beginning in 2014. It does help out, but it does not get us to the number we need to generate to cover those debt payments. This next chart is using these following assumptions, that once again, no new construction, authorized additional two mills by the city, and additional two mills just in the downtown development area district, which they are permitted to levy on themselves. If we were to reduce other operating expenditures, we would have enough revenue to cover annual debt payments until 2015, so we'd pick up one year, basically. Those are the effects of the recent market value projected decreases in that area.
Are we asking questions at the end or now?
I'll have questions right at the end.
Okay.
Next slide was provide information on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority's revolving loan fund. And effective July 1st, 2009, the city stopped accumulating funds in the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority's revolving fund. The budget adopted by the Brownfield Authority and the city council stopped collections for any further additions to that revolving fund. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has approximately $2.5 million in the revolving fund currently, and the city's share of that is approximately $1.2 million, with the other taxing jurisdictions making up the remaining portion of that. These funds could become available to the city by dissolving the revolving fund. There are steps that we'd have to go through in order to get that accomplished, but we believe that is a possibility. Upon dissolving the funds, they will be distributed to all taxing jurisdictions according to their funds that were captured. And if possible, we would recommend that this fund be dissolved, and the city's share of approximately $1.2 million be applied to the current year shortfall. And this, once again, is a one-time adjustment that could be made. Another question was, why can't we use the reserve funds from the transit center, civic center improvements, and trail systems? These are all projects that are contained within our capital projects fund. And the 2009-10 budget provides a funding, a transit center of about $1.3 million, civic center improvements $1.1, trail system $2 million. These funds were generated by grants and mostly property taxes levied for capital improvements in the capital projects fund. We also know there are some other commitments relating to the transit center, timed commitments and restraints and so forth, that if that were to be, we lose the funding and so forth, and that property would revert back to the developer. We'd lose that opportunity. Just keep in mind when you're considering these options. These funds, the only way I believe that we can move these funds would be to cancel the projects and then have a corresponding millage reduction in the capital fund and add that millage to the general fund. These funds were earmarked and budgeted for and set aside as part of the capital project levy, tax levy, to be used for the capital projects. So there is a way to get around that, and that you basically cancel the projects. Those funds would fall into fund balance in the capital fund that's generated there. You could then reallocate some millage that would be attributable to those, and then move that over to the general fund if you wanted to move money from these projects to the general fund. Once again, I'm just taking a look at what's going to be generating the capital projects fund based on our current taxable values. It runs from about $7.9 million this year. It decreases every year. To 2015, the existing tax rate of $1.53 mills will generate about $5.4 million. There's a question, provide estimated operation and maintenance costs for the transit center. The study that was completed, estimated annual operation and maintenance costs of approximately $42,000 per year. And in the plan itself, it was anticipated that the private transit companies are expected to cover most of these expenses. If those are not met by the private transit companies, then it would be an obligation of the city, and the city of Birmingham and Troy, to make up that difference. But it is thought that the private transit companies would cover those costs, utilities, maintenance, janitorial, and so forth. maintenance, janitorial, and so forth. Would it be cost-effective to sell Sanctuary Lake Golf Course? As you can see, if you look at the revenue generated over the last five years, expenses less depreciation, we're looking on a cash generation basis here, that they do provide funds that are available to pay debt service, not the full amount. That's why we show a loss in that fund, operating loss there, but we do provide funds that go towards debt service. If this golf course were to be closed, we would then be responsible for the debt service without any other source of revenue to help us pay that, and we'd be responsible for that, basically, we would have been responsible for that bottom line there. If we were to sell it, if we could get enough money to cover what we owe on the debt, which is about eleven million dollars outstanding, then that's a whole different story, and we don't believe, because in that eleven million, initial cost of that, we had a lot of remediation, we had a lot of purchase some other additional land, and a lot of things that went into it, and the value of the course, we did not believe that this current mark would fetch over eleven million dollars. The bonds on a golf course also go out to the year two thousand and twenty-seven, twenty-eight, roughly almost nine hundred thousand dollars per year. Take a look at Sylvan Glen. Sylvan Glen does not have any debt, and they are doing well. The revenue versus expenses less depreciation, they provide quite a bit of funds for improvements to the course. We've done a lot there, and we have not had to bond out for any of those improvements to the course. Provide information on private versus public management of the golf courses. When we first opened up Sanctuary Lake roughly five years ago, we stayed at that time, we did take a look at the operations of the course, private versus city cost. And at that time, it was, worked out that the city costs were less than the private companies to perform the maintenance on that. As part of that original, as part of the five years ago, we also said that in five years, we would then, once the course is established and so forth, we would take a look at and go out again to get a RFP on private versus public, and also look at, we're also going to throw in the operations and maintenance of both courses when we take a look at this. We are in the process of doing that now, and we hope before the end of the year, the RFPs will be out and ready to roll. Should we consider closing the Troy Family Aquatic Center, since it consistently loses money? Well, it does not consistently lose money. Operating results are greatly affected, of course, by weather conditions. Over the past seven years, the center generated enough funds to cover operations for at least four years, and one year just missing by five hundred and forty-four dollars. So in other words, once again, it does not consistently lose money. Attendance at the park ranges in excess of fifty thousand patrons per year, and this is an enterprise fund and really not part of the general fund. One other question is provide a summary of pension contribution cost. Based upon our December thirty-first, two thousand and eight actuarial evaluation, which was dated and received in August of two thousand and nine, the city will need to increase its employer contributions by one million dollars per year for at least the next four years. This is, the main result is a result of experiencing a negative twenty-five point three percent investment return for calendar year two thousand and eight. These numbers are built in, additional million, one million dollars each year are built into our expenditure model. Some cost-cutting activities in other funds, other expenditure categories. We took a look at the top ten expenditure categories excluding wages. Those make up roughly about twenty-six percent of our overall budget, with personnel costs making up around seventy-one percent. The top ten in total increased by four point nine percent over the last six years, which on average is a point eight two percent increase per year. The CPI for last year alone was four point four percent for one year. Now, if you have any questions on what I've covered up to this point.
Councilman Ismer, you wanted to ask a question, I think, back on the page about the DDA. You had something marked?
Yes. Back in the DDA. In light of the fact that in all scenarios, the DDA goes into the red, do we have a current recommendation regarding spending?
We have put in place the, the current project on Big Beaver Rochester Road was one of the main projects outlined in our Big Beaver corridor study to improve that entryway into the city. That is the only project. We have other projects that are slated, but those have all been put on hold. There are some major slab replacements to be done along the corridor. There were some interchange improvements that were talked about, which were quite expensive. Those have all been put on hold at this point. We are planning on completing the Rochester Road Park that's already under construction right now.
Is there any way to cut the cost of that?
We'd have to look at that.
Given the fact it is going red badly?
We'd have to look at it and see where we are with the contract and so forth, and what is, what our commitments are according to the contract that was signed.
Okay. And I think you already indicated this, Mr. Lamorato, but the debt service payment is still the responsibility of the city. If the DDA does not have the funds to cover that, would you explain that, please?
Most of the DDA bonded projects were downtown development authority revenue bonds, per se, which means that the downtown development authority is responsible for the payment of those bonds. There, on some of the bonds, there was some insurance purchased for the, in case something were to happen, in any instance here where they wouldn't be able to make those payments. It's our belief, and we are have, we do have a meeting scheduled with Buzinski and Company this week, or first part of next week, relating to these bonds. We still believe that even though they are, they are called the City of Troy Downtown Development Authority Bonds, that the city is somewhat liable for those bonds. We'd have to wait and see, but Bond Council and through our financial advisor and so forth on what exactly would happen if we weren't able to pay those bonds. We are meeting with them, we do have a meeting scheduled.
Councilwoman Baltamini, you had one?
Do we, since Sylvan Glen pays their expenses and Sanctuary Lake does not, I know that right now they are two separate enterprise funds. Is there a way to combine them so that, at the very least, the first cut of golfing debt would be paid by golfers?
There, I'm sure there probably would be a way to combine those into one, we'll call it general golf course funds. The one, the Sanctuary Lake, since it does have debt, and it's kind of issued through this municipal building authority debt, there's a little bit more constraints there probably on that, but I think in general, they're both enterprise funds, they're both for the same purpose, providing golf opportunities to the public. So they probably could be, that could help offset some of the shortages there, but we also have a lot of, you know, we have things planned also for Sylvan Glen too that need to be done, but with some of those excess funds that they're generating without bonding and so forth. But in the short term, there could be some assistance in the cash flow if we were to combine both those funds. It'd still be two, it'd still be accounted for separately, but it would be the two separate entities, but it would, could be combined under a golf course activity.
I guess my concern is, the people in this town who never golf may not appreciate those assets the way golfers do, and therefore may not see that there's an equal trade-off with funding for the library or funding for golf courses. So if we can at least make golfers pay the first cut of that, I think the general public would appreciate that.
It's, it's very important to point out that it's accounting, it's accounting terminology, accounting, what happens here basically is that the golf courses are separate from the general fund. Now, if they don't make money, there may be an inter-fund loan to cover that shortage in cash, but there are no expenditures or revenues shown in the general fund for the golf course operations, for either one. But there is, when there is a shortage, and if they can't provide enough cash to provide for years, it's basically, basically an inter-fund receivable payable type thing to the golf course. So it would help, it'd help reduce some of that inter-fund payable and receivable, but once again, there are no expenses or revenues in the general fund related to the golf course.
Councilwoman Baltamini?
I understand it's a loan. Now, my question becomes, okay, if it's a loan for debt service that wasn't made, is there not money in the debt service fund that it has to come out of general fund, or can't debt service loan money to things that weren't that kind of debt?
No. Once again, this is, the golf course is a municipal building authority bond, which does have, I believe, the full faith and credit of the city behind it. Now, if they were not able to make those payments, and there was no other source of revenue to make those payments, then it could be come out of our debt service fund. Our debt service fund has its own debt structure right now set up, and we'll be looking at those and some other funds to make sure that these future taxable values will be enough to cover those areas.
Thank you.
Councilman Ismer, do you have a question?
No, the same thing. I was going to ask, why, why don't we combine them so that the debt service is partially offset by the excess from Sylvan Glen? And you said the shortages are paid by loans, but I didn't catch the second step of that. Where does the money for those loans, are they just perpetually outstanding, or where?
It's considered a, it's a liability or an asset, it's a due to, the Sanctuary Lake has a due to the general fund, basically, for those, for those funds. It's an inter-fund receivable and a payable between those funds, whatever cash they don't have, generate to pay for their bills that come up.
Comes out of the general?
General fund, not as an expenditure, but it does come out, not as, it comes out of the general fund. It's general fund, once again, fifty-five percent of the revenue in the general fund comes from city taxes. So when people say, well, I pay my taxes, it's, you pay for fifty-five percent of our cost to operate the city. The other forty-five percent comes of various service and charges, and interest, and rents, and other sources of revenue.
Okay, so it's the general fund tax levy that covers it, but not the general fund? Or which tax?
No, it's not the general fund tax levy, it's the general fund itself covers that loss in rep, loss in cash that is needed to pay for those services.
What replenishes the general fund cash supply then?
Well, it's, it-
Forty-five and fifty-five, right?
Right. Whatever comes in each year, and if we have an increase in fund balance, or we have a decrease in fund balance, that, you know, that all affects the available cash that we do have. But it does, it does come into play, and it does take some cash away from the general fund.
Okay.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
This is page eight, it's slide fifteen. I wanted to ask you a little bit about the negative twenty-five percent investment return. If you could explore with me, Mr. Lamorato, is this quarter loss something that all municipalities are seeing? Was based on Wall Street, or?
Well, it's based, the funds are invested in the stacks, bonds, mutual funds, governmental agencies. I'd say twenty-five percent is a very good number for a loss for two thousand and eight. We know of many systems that have in excess of thirty percent losses for that year. So I just looked, we had an article, Yale, the Yale Endowment Fund lost twenty-five percent in two thousand and eight, which is billions of dollars probably. So I mean, it's, once again, it's something that the market, everybody had to deal with in your own personal IRAs or 401s, whatever you may have. I'm sure you lost a substantial amount of money probably last year. So this fund is a long-term fund. What we basically do, and in our assumptions, we use a six and a half percent investment interest earning, base six and a half percent per year, which is conservative compared to most municipalities. So we have that as part of our assumptions, but we take, also, we look at, we have a five-year trending and smoothing of this loss. So it's divided, twenty percent of that loss we recognized for each of the next five years. And then what happens in the next year, so we have some accumulations from past years that are still working their way through the system, so we don't get, if we were to get hit by twenty-five percent all at one time, that would be a major impact on it. So that is smoothed out with a five-year trend. And we met, we just, as Matt, we just met last month with our actuaries, with the retirement board, and they went over the, went over the results with us. So I think twenty-five percent, if you look out there, that's probably a pretty good number, even though you hate to have any losses, but a twenty-five percent loss is still a pretty good number.
Thank you for putting it in perspective.
Mayor? Mayor Tim Howard?
Starting from the DDA, could you speak a little bit to the pro forma numbers you have here, starting with the current fiscal year that we're in? What is its captured value of the DDA?
We have, tax-wise for the current year is three million, four hundred and thirty-eight, eight fifty, in tax revenue. The capture taxable value for the current year is two hundred and twenty-one million, seven eighteen, four sixty-five.
So we're looking at about a thirty-some percent reduction in captured taxable?
It's going to one fifty, for next year, one fifty-three, one fifty-three, three eighty-five, seven forty.
I mean, I mean, it's just kind of, the DDA, of course, is kind of the tips of the value, so it can certainly fluctuate greatly. But how confident are you with, I mean, I'm guessing you're pretty confident with the seventy million dollar drop in this year to next year? As we get further out, how confident are you with those numbers?
I think we're, I would say that last week too, we're very confident in the first two years of those numbers. We know that overall, citywide, a twelve percent reduction for next year and a ten percent the following year, and from that point on, the next three years out, we're anywhere from five to four percent reductions each of those years. Even with the county equalization, they're fairly, they are confident with the two-year numbers, and they, when they're projections. And they also stated that going out beyond three years, you don't know, you know, it's, hopefully things will turn around better than they are, but in some cases, someone said, well, your, you know, your numbers may be low, and maybe, they might be quite a bit worse than that. Some people are saying, well, hopefully things will turn around in a couple of years, and we'll start to see some recovery. So we believe the next two years, ten, eleven, eleven, twelve are good numbers.
I imagine there are a lot of tax tribunal cases in the DDA. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, but are we building, what are we building into our models here?
Yeah, we have, and Mr. LaParr could probably address that a little better, of the outstanding cases. I'm sure there are some, but I'm not sure there are any really major ones in the DDA. We did have built in a reserve of nine hundred thousand dollars, I believe, for tax tribunal adjustments in the DDA area.
Well, I was just curious if, it seems to me would be, that the hardest real estate value in Troy, aside from industrial, is probably commercial property because of the, basically the non-use reduction, permanent reduction of property value. And if you're comfortable with ten, eleven, and eleven, twelve is what you're saying?
I believe, yeah, we're comfortable with those the first two years, and we feel that the next three years, we, we're fairly comfortable with them, but we're not a hundred percent on those, but we are fairly comfortable with the following three years.
Fair enough. And moving onward, the- And moving onward, the, on page, or on slide number eight, with respect to the transit center, the center improvements in the trail system, you said most of the money here is property taxes, but some of it is grants.
Right.
So I was curious as to how much of that is grants?
We, we have received, we received a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar state grant, state and federal grant for the, basically for the study on the transit center design and study of it. And I believe most of those funds have been expended to this point.
Okay. Speaking, I'm, let me ask you something. I'm looking at your property tax revenue on slide number nine for the capital projects fund, and I was curious as to how that affects the long-range capital improvements plan that we've been talking about in our budget sessions? Because there were certain assumptions that were built into your models, and I'm guessing are probably no longer the case with the property value decrease that you're projecting. And one of the things we've really been talking about is, is the basically acts in capital projects, too. And I'm not sure if that's what you're planning to do, or if you're planning, you know, how that all fits in with everything we've been-
Right. Well, each year, we do take a look at it. We like to go up five years in the major categories, road improvements, so forth. And a lot of the road projects are still tied to some grant revenue and so forth. So a majority of it is being paid by federal or state funds for a lot of the road projects. So we try to match up whatever is needed for those. We do take a look each year during the budget process, and we calculate what our revenue are, what the revenue we're anticipating. So those will have to be recalibrated, and each year they're recalibrated to see what we have available in taxes, what we have available in other grants and so forth that will be coming into, during those years. A lot of those projects are multiple year, multi-year projects, so some of them have, will be completed this year, some will be in the middle, midst of completion. So all those are factored in, but we do take a look at it each year. So this revenue source will definitely, you know, have an impact on our capital projects in the future here with, based on these estimates. We do take a look at it each year and recalibrate on what we have and what we can try to accomplish. We have, we know what total, in total, what we need to do in all various segments, but in drains, streets, sidewalks, whatever. But we then try to match it up to what we have available funding for each year.
Could I ask a question that has to do with the roads before I go to the next one? Okay. To piggyback on that question about the road funds, since we receive money from state and federal grants for road projects, if we don't have our money set aside for those projects, then we can't receive the allocation from state or federal money for those projects and that would go to other entities?
Right, but we are, believe it or not, we're more fortunate than most cities. We have, we've been able to capture a lot of grant money because we do have the twenty percent, or, so that's needed to match a lot of the grants. We're not saying that that necessarily will be depleted. We're saying that roads are still one of our top priority items, and wherever we can match money for a road project, that takes top priority. If we can get eighty percent on the dollar from another source, we'll come up, we'll make sure we have the twenty percent to match that. And we would not give up in that matching case, and we are not facing that, even with these reduced numbers. And who knows what the grant, grants are to be cut back to, so, but who knows? We don't anticipate any actual reduction there, even with these reduced numbers. Because roads are top, one of the top priorities in the capital projects fund, and we'll allocate the available funding for those projects.
Mayor?
Thank you. Councilman Isbacher?
On this same slide, I mean, I think Councilman Horlag still had a list.
Right, he has more. I just thought while we were on that particular subject, yes.
Yeah, on this particular slide, I think we have to have a discussion as a council, how we're gonna split this, and feedback, obviously, from the staff, how we're gonna split this between major roads and local roads, because the local road cost in the next few years is quite substantial portion.
Right.
If I may, the, there's a, in a study that goes back, I think, six or seven years, which indicates that we have to allocate about five million dollars a year for local road maintenance, just to keep the between good and adequate condition.
May I add a name?
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
And I'm, I think we have to bear in mind that the county has been declining some of the service for the roads, and that it's been a value of our residents to see that the roads are maintained. There have been times when this city has stepped forward and fixed the roads because people think that's the basic tenet of government, is to provide those roads on which people go.
I think that the city of Troy has spent more Troy taxpayer money on major county roads in Troy than the open county road commission has spent on major county roads in Troy. And that was because we had to.
Right. Yes. Councilwoman Kerwin?
I have a, just a question about the multiplier. How long has it been a policy of council that when there is a multiplier in place where some funds invested by the city can be multiplied by, through grants or through matched city, county, state, federal dollars? How long has that been a standing post?
Before my time here. I'm sure it's been quite a while. We've always have had plans on the shelf for when there is, becomes additional available money, because cities or counties or whatever can't come up with their funding, we're ready to go with that. So I'm, I'm not sure how long it's been, but it's been probably over twenty years or so.
Easily.
Always, probably over that, I'm sure way over that, but we've always tried, when you can get eighty, eighty cents on the dollar from another source, we take advantage of that.
And I'm thinking in terms of the slide that Mayor Protem pointed out, slide nine, when it talks about transit civic center trails, that a lot of those were the multipliers, and the reasons that those were considered differently was that an initial investment would then be multiplied and benefit.
For the trail system, that would probably be the case, that two million could probably generate quite a bit more money, and if we have matching funds or show the commitment towards that, that would probably help. Civic center improvements are really, there's probably not a lot of, there may be some grant funds out there, but probably not that much for civic center improvements.
Okay. Mayor Protem Horlag, you had another slide you want to go to?
Well, I just wanted to discuss a little bit more the golf, the two golf courses and the, well, you, you know, the, I guess the, I have a comment and perhaps, maybe I can just get the assistant city manager fill the blanks. I guess what I'm getting at is, we have on these two slides, number eleven and twelve, funds available to pay debt service, which it looks like it's revenue minus operating expenses. It says less depreciation and interest, which means that it doesn't include capital maintenance and capital improvements. And I think from an emergency standpoint, that's okay, but obviously we need to maintain the facility. So I was curious as to what a, what you would consider to be an average number, and it's probably, I'm guessing, close to depreciation, but for those two courses each would be?
Sanctuary Lake being a new, being a new course, basically, we have not had to have a lot of other improvements done to it. We do have occasional pieces of equipment or so forth that need to be replaced, whatever, and that would come out over and above, that would reduce the amount that, the remaining cash that's available for the debt service. But even there, being a newer course, we haven't had a lot of equipment there that has been purchased. The average, probably, the depreciation cost is probably close to around three hundred thousand dollars a year for Sanctuary Lake. Once again, that's an expense, but it's a non-cash item outline.
All right. Yeah, I had the same question-
Councilman Isbacher?
For fourteen. It looks like the-
Are you talking in your mics to the audience in here?
Oh, sorry. The same question for the aquatic center. I noticed that it didn't look like the capital expenses were included for the aquatic center costs, or summary.
And once again, those are as needed as they come up. There usually isn't a lot of money spent on there, maybe anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand or so that, not even every year, but some years there may be replacement of some of the tents and pavilion areas and things like that, and pumps and so forth that are major capital. But those, once again, are, some of those are repair and maintenance, some are capital expenditures, depending on what they, what's involved with the production.
Okay, so those, those maintenance and repairs and capital is not included in?
Major capital repairs, any other repairs and maintenance are included in the operating expenses.
Daily, okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Councilman Fleming?
Yes, I'd like to go back to something that Mr. Zurlag referred to on the roads and the study that was done some years ago, we carried forward, indicating that we need five million dollars per year. And you said this was local roads only, and I just want clarification on that for our listeners, because we've defined local and major roads, and this five million dollars that we're talking about that we need just to maintain is for local roads only. And for our listeners, maybe you could clarify what that means compared to major roads? Because where's the five million need to be spent? Would it be spent?
And again, this is my recollection, I believe the five million is for local roads only. And a local road is defined as streets that essentially are constructed for residential use, some limited, small, commercial, industrial use, but is not a major thoroughfare. Normally, typically, we have about three hundred miles of local streets. The great majority of that mileage are for, in front, and are, is the frontage for single family homes. Major streets are essentially Big Beaver Road, you know, Coolidge, all the major mileroads essentially that run north and south, as well as east and west.
I believe the five million dollar was a number to keep all local roads in good condition.
Right.
This current year, I believe we have around three million dollars, and we've normally been averaging two to three million dollars in local roads. That keeps it in fair to moderate condition. Now, to get to good condition over a number of years, we'd have to spend five million dollars per year, just for local roads.
Any other questions on these slides? Councilman, Mayor Protem Horlag?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one more. What, excuse me, what is the due to the, what is the amount that is due to the, the operating fund from the Sanctuary Lake Golf Course?
Okay. I don't have that exact number, but the first couple of years, Sylvan Glenn did provide some of the, the cash flow that was necessary.
Right, the offset.
So I would say it's probably, it's probably about a million and a half or so?
I guess I should clarify, what is the amount due from Sanctuary Lake to other funds?
I don't have that exact number, but I think it's, it would be whatever the operating losses are from the-
Add it up, okay.
Yeah.
Actually, there is one more thing. The, it's my recollection, when we've been getting our reports from, from the various different departments, that the rounds of golf played at the two golf courses, I was actually surprised, it looks like Sylvan Glenn's rounds are down quite a bit this year, is that correct?
They are down. What we're doing is, well, they are down, at Sanctuary, they're down also, and a lot of it's the economy. But what we're also doing is, we're looking at preparing those reports in a golf season cycle versus a fiscal year cycle, because it does cross over. You have a few months from last year into the golf season cycle, and depending on if you have a good spring or not, or whatever, that could, you know, drastically change, or a fall here. Unfortunately, it's turned pretty cool here lately, which is gonna hurt. We're hoping to be, you know, going through October, but this latest change in weather has hurt the courses also. But we are gonna provide that information on a golf season, and, because it also depends on when, when leagues pay their money. For example, they pay, a lot of them pay in installments and so forth, so some of them pay earlier or later, whatever, that could sway some of the numbers. So we wanted to show it on a season-by-season basis. But the rounds are down, the rounds are down for both courses. I think you'll find it at any course probably throughout the state and issue.
Okay. I guess we're ready for the next section, which is the summary of the staff reductions for the last six years. Mrs. Sears is gonna do that, is that correct, Mr. Zurlag? Am I on the right?
You're on the right track, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to show you over the next six slides what we've done so far in terms of personnel staffing and benefits. Several years ago, we established an efficiencies committee, it's comprised of John Zurlag, both assistant city managers and myself. Whenever there's a vacancy, full-time or part-time, we review that, determine whether or not it needs to be filled, when the timing should be, the department has to justify the need for maintaining that position. Most of these positions have been lost due to attrition. This past year, we did have several layoffs that impacted this. As you can see on the first slide, fiscal year two thousand four, five, there were five positions lost, two clerk typists, an appraiser, an account clerk, and an education coordinator. In two thousand, fiscal year two thousand and five, three positions weren't unfilled, two equipment operators, and housing and zoning inspector. Fiscal two thousand and six, there were nine positions unfilled, an assistant to the manager, library one, librarian one, library aide, office assistant, animal control officer, stormwater utility engineer, a clerk typist, and a senior right-of-way rep. The following year, there were four more positions not filled, engineering specialist, a librarian two, an animal control officer, and a right-of-way representative. In two thousand and eight, which carries over to the next slide, there were a total of ten positions not filled. Those included seven layoffs, they were a plan examiner, community affairs officers, two of them, project manager, engineering specialist, engineering technician, inspector, and then a fire lieutenant, assistant naturalist from the nature center, and a trade specialist in the proximal recreation division. In fiscal two thousand and nine, there are a total of twenty-four positions, let me back up, twenty-four positions that went unfilled, an account clerk, electrical inspector, a building ops superintendent, an office assistant, deputy city engineer, civil engineer, accountant, two librarian twos, planner, principal planner, lieutenant, sergeant, office, three officers, the deputy chief in the police department, and three more equipment operators. The total reduction in staff was fifty-five over that six-year period. It's approximately eleven and a half percent. And I know there has been some debate over our staffing compared to other cities, and in the surveys that we've done, the staff per capita is five point nine eight seven on the average. Here in Troy, it's five point two six nine, so I think we're fairly comparable to what most communities are.
That's per thousand residents?
I'm sorry, yes, it is per thousand. I think you'll find in terms of the benefits that we're also fairly ahead of the game, we began many years ago, starting to reduce benefits in several areas. First of them being health insurance. In nineteen eighty-nine, and we continued to negotiate it through two thousand and one, we began offering cash-in-lieu of health insurance. What occurred was many employees who were carrying two-person health, because their spouse also carried family, they dropped it and took the cash-in-lieu. That meant a savings of about two hundred and fifty dollars versus the twelve hundred that the two-person coverage would have been. We have approximately fifteen percent currently getting the cash-in-lieu. In nineteen ninety-two, we began eliminating the traditional coverage under Blue Cross and replaced it with the PPO. There are a few exceptions. There are, I think, seven police officers who carry the traditional coverage, but they pay for the difference in the cost between that and the PPO. The change, there's a six percent change in cost by getting rid of the traditional. We offer also the HMOs, we have approximately two hundred and four employees in HMOs and a hundred and forty in the PPO. All of our employees share in the cost of their premium for health insurance. It varies by employee group, but on the average, most of our employees contribute eighty-five dollars per month. We started negotiating that in nineteen eighty-two. Looking at most of our comparables, their employees share on the average ninety dollars per month, so we're in the ballpark there. so we're in the ballpark there. In the year of pension, 1998 was the first time we negotiated replacing the defined benefit plan, which if you call is based on, is formula-driven, with the defined contribution plan. We currently have 70% of our employees in defined contribution. We're one of the few municipalities who have achieved that for every employee group. We have been reducing the employer contribution towards defined contribution pension plans by two to three years. We started doing that in 2006, and we completed the negotiations for that in, I'm sorry, 2003, and completed those negotiations in 2006. We are also one of the few comparables who have replaced retiree health insurance with retiree health savings plans for every employee group. The last group that will implement that was a recently settled contract, it'll take place in 2011, but we began negotiating it in 2006. Approximately 37 employees, or almost 9% of our employees right now, have retiree health insurance. I know there's been a lot of talk over the past year regarding the longevity program. That was eliminated for new hires for all employee groups, starting in 1993. We were able to negotiate it with all of our groups through 2001, that was the last year that we finally implemented it for the last group. Most, or many of our comparable communities still have full longevity for all of their employees, they have not reduced it for new hires. And finally, the tuition reimbursement program, we did eliminate it for classified and exempt employees this past year. It is intended that we begin to gradually negotiate that with future contracts. Can I answer any questions?
Questions for Mrs. Sears, Councilman Heitzbacher?
The comparables for percentage of employees per thousand residents, was that calibrated to be apples-to-apples, where the fire department was calibrated to the volunteer fire department that we don't count, isn't being counted in the comparable communities? So however many full-time firemen they have removed, so that it's the same calibrated for our volunteer fire department?
Not looking at our benefits, we were looking at all the jurisdictions, many of them in Oakland, McComb, we also looked at some of the bigger jurisdictions, Ann Arbor, Lansing, Grand Rapids, to see what they were doing. We did not look department by department and compare that staffing level when we looked at what their benefit structure was.
I'm just talking in terms of the number of employees per thousand residents?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where you gave the 5.9...
I didn't see it in the presentation, you said it verbally, I believe?
No, that excluded the fire departments.
It did exclude the fire department?
I will double-check that, but I'm fairly certain that it excluded, I don't have the backup data with me right now. I'll find that out.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Fleming?
I missed that percentage, I got the 5...
Can you?
I heard the 5.97, which is the average, and ours was 5.0, and it isn't included in the slides.
5.269?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Protem Haralag?
How many part-time employees do we have? And what are those trends?
Approximately 200. And I'm sorry, was your second question?
And if we can get information from you or the city manager, whoever could provide it to us, the trends in, you have basically the trends in full-time employees, I would like to get that for part-time too.
Part-time will fluctuate considerably with the seasons. There have been years when we have gone upwards of 400, 450 part-time employees in the summer, but we can provide that certainly.
Right, and I guess the question I'm asking is the budgeted part-time, which if somebody works part-time even during the summer, who'd grab them? Another way of doing it would be figuring out how many W-2s and city issues each year, backing out your full-timers and backing up any that are issued to retirees and what's left.
Yes, we can get that.
Yeah. Also, I'm curious, what is the, on the defined contribution plan, what is the greatest percentage that the city is paying as a percent of somebody employed or anybody currently employed?
The greatest is 13% for, when the program was first implemented, for one employee group. All of the groups have been negotiated down to 10%.
And just to be equal, what is the smallest percentage that any group might be getting now?
10%.
So, people are, anybody who is in a DC plan right now is getting between, somewhere between 10 and 13, and there's no required employee match, or there is?
Employees contribute...
Mayor, council, I believe employees contribute between probably 3 and 5%.
Does he get the match?
Thank you. And then finally, with respect to healthcare, it's my understanding that there are still, if, there are people that have retired, or former employees of the city who are retired, who are on the defined benefit plan, who are getting, what is it, upwards of 2.5% a year of service?
Correct.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Further questions, and Mrs. Clifton? Appreciate the information on the staff, especially because some of the residents are not aware that in the last six years, we're down 55 employees, or 11.48%. And I don't know if we've compared, did we compare that reduction in number of staff to other cities? I know we compared full-time staff numbers, but I wondered about reduction in number of employees in other cities comparable sizes.
No, we have not computed that.
Thank you. What's the, what's the next section, Mr. Zurlag?
I will turn it over to Jen Zurlag.
Okay, Mr. Zurlag?
I'd like to make, can you hear me okay? Am I heard okay?
Yes.
I'd like to make a slight...
This mic is better than that.
Okay, I'd just like to make a slight deviation, and that is that in Troy, we practice the interest-based approach to solving problems with our employees. And I have three gentlemen here that wanted to speak in relationship to that partnership. The first one would be Lieutenant Robert Redmond of the Troy Command Officers Association, the second would be Officer Mike Geissi from the Troy Police Officers Association, and the third would be Mike Schlegelmann from Aspen. So if I may allow them to speak before I begin my part, that would be appreciated.
I think it would help in clarification for council and for others, yes.
It certainly would help, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of council, as you know, Lieutenant Bob Redmond, Police Department. First off, I want to say thank you. I've been here 30 years, the city has always taken care of me. It's been a great experience. You can't hear me?
No, put the mic up, I want to make sure the audience can hear you.
Okay. I said thank you. It's been great, it's been 30 years, you've taken care of us, you've taken care of our associations, you've taken care of the police department and the rest of the city, it's a beautiful place to live. We want to keep it that way. To remind you, in January 2009, we lost members through retirements, our association has reduced over 20% so far this year, with two more going at the end of the year, we'll be down about 25% command staff in one year's period of time. We have stepped up to the plate, we have taken on additional duties, and we are continuing business as usual. To me, it was a phenomenal feat, and we're pulling it off without any problems, and we'll continue to do so. Problem is, we're going to lose two more in January this year, and I'm confident they won't be replaced, we understand that, we will make changes that are necessary, and we'll continue through that. Clearly, we are giving before we were asking. The TCO understands that the city will be coming to us seeking wage concessions due to the problems we are having now. I'm here to tell you tonight that our association remains dedicated to assisting the city in balancing the budget, I'm sorry, balancing the budget and protecting the jobs that are necessary to keep the city safe.
Thank you. Officer Geissi?
Mayor, City Council, Michael Geissi, on behalf of the Troy Police Officers Association, I just want to start off by saying that this is a wonderful city to work for, and we really value the opportunity to be employed here. We're really fortunate to use the IBB process, we value what it's done for us in the past. We understand that these are tough times, and they require us to make very difficult decisions with what we're faced against, we're committed to sitting down and attempting to find some form of concession within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is, just to clarify, my friend John, Mike Beheilik.
Right.
I represent the, I'm the chairman of the Aspen Local 574 Bargaining Unit. We represent the streets and drains, water and sewer, parks and rec, fleet maintenance, and the engineering department. We'd like you to know that our group has met with the city manager and his staff, and has begun to develop what we hope will be a fair and amicable solution to work through this financial crisis. We have proven ourselves in the recent past with our willingness to negotiate a one-year contract in which a freeze of the previous contract was accepted and is currently in place until 2010. We have endured through attrition, the loss of a lot of our staff, but we'll pull our weight, and we will continue to pull our weight. And we are absolutely willing to continue to talk, to do whatever it takes to keep the city services running and the people employed. We also would like to thank you for the foresay to giving us a chance in the advanced preparation to preserve the needed services for the city and to maintain the current workforce. We hope to look forward to many more years working for the city of Troy, maintaining the roads, drains, water systems, parks, and equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, Mr. Zurlag, on the three, Lieutenant Redmond mentioned about being down after the two officers retire, they'll be down 25% by the end of the year in command officers, did I hear that correctly?
That's what I heard as well.
And I'm wondering in the TPOA, what the percentage decreased from where we were, and also in DPW? Do we have those numbers, does Mrs. Clifton have those numbers?
If she doesn't, we'll make sure that we bring them in by next week.
Okay, thank you.
If Peggy does, she can raise her hand and interrupt me.
Okay, thank you. I think that those are important numbers for people to realize too.
Absolutely, our function is to give the governing body a zone of comfort in making a decision on this most important matter.
Yes, Mayor Protem Haralag, did you have a question too?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that, because I am a, I'm a little bit confused, because I know that with the buyouts, that was last year, I think, towards the end of the last fiscal year, and a number of those were supposed to be replaced, I believe, through moving people up into the command officers. And I'm curious as to how many budgeted but unfilled positions do we have, and you can provide that, in that information as well? And just kind of walk us through what happened with the buyouts and positions and what have you, so that we can all be on the same page.
Okay, in other words, who was bought out, and what happened to the position, essentially?
Right, was the position eliminated, or is it sitting there waiting to either be eliminated or filled?
Sure.
Right.
And again, I'll rely on Mr. Lamrato and Mrs. Sears for that information.
Okay, all right, thank you. While they're getting that together, you want to go on to your assumptions?
Of course. First, I want to apologize to Mike for having the wrong last name, I'm sorry, Mike. Part two of this presentation essentially is so what? And if you recall, last Monday, we spoke about this issue having three whats. The first what is what is it? And we spoke with Bob Daddow and Mr. Farrell about a declining revenue line, Mr. Lamrato also helped, I think that's taken care of. There was also a series of questions that were asked that I think were addressed adequately tonight, that spawned more questions, which we will be happy to respond to hopefully next week. There's a need for further clarification of the workforce reduction. And to clear up any misunderstanding from last week, we need to emphasize that with or without a mileage increase, the city of Troy is still going to reduce the workforce by privatization, regionalization, combination of city departments, and layoffs. Just wanted to make that clear. Assumption that we have is actually a reality, management and staff are working with partnerships to further reduce in expenditures through wage and salary concessions. To date, several department directors, including your two direct reports, have volunteered to take a 5% salary concession. Also, I have one letter from the Troy Fire Service Officers Association that has already agreed to a 5% reduction in their contract, and four labor unions have agreed to negotiate wage concessions, and we're working again with all of them. This matrix is a little complicated, but it shows with specificity each department and the number of positions that would be cut under the, what we call option one, which essentially is to close down the community center, museum, nature center, and eliminate some departments. When you take a look at the totals, you'll see in the, you'll see the total layoffs or reduction in workforce is almost 160 full-time positions as a result of this option. And what should look familiar on the revenues and expenditures here is what was contained in my letter to you of September 9th. And again, this shows on the perdepartment basis, cuts that would need to be made. And the purpose of showing you this is that, again, we first went to the quality of life departments, as well as other departments before touching police and fire. It turned out that there was not enough funding in those departments to keep the police and fire departments unscathed, if you will, and so that resulted in elimination of 47 positions in the police department and three positions for the fire department. Further subset of this is that, and this is shown last week, we would still eliminate the departments that are listed on the left-hand column. And again, this is with or without a mileage increase, it's just to balance the numbers that we have. There's the risk management department, we have a function here that would be assigned to another department. In terms of privatization, again, the departments on the left would seek to be privatized to some degree, and the numbers that are in the matrix of two or three slides ago, they're model numbers, they're not that, we had to put down a specific number and take a percentage thereof as a savings, which is buttressed by memoranda that's in your attachment, but when it comes right down to it, we won't know what the most cost-effective hybrid solution is until we actually get a specification for each department in conjunction with those departments to determine what level of service we want, because that's hugely important. And then bring that back to council for approval. But the timeframe is that we'll begin privatization as soon as possible, contingent upon labor contracts, some legal issues, and development of specifications, the bidding process as well. Again, a subset of what that first matrix indicated, going on a perdepartment basis, excluding those departments that we had great specificity with last time, like the police and fire departments, I was asked what departments would experience cuts, and again, according to the model, we have the following. The attorney's office would lose... And again, according to the model, we have the following. The attorney's office would lose essentially one full-time position. The clerk's office would go from seven people to three people. Accounting and risk management, there's two and a half people that would be cut. That's because there's a split of one full-time employee with the treasures department. There's the .5 in the treasures office. Producing would be cut in half. Real estate development would be essentially expunged, although one full-time position has been assigned to the manager's office. Community affairs would be eliminated. The director's position will be assigned to a vacant position in the community services section of the police department. Risk management, one person would be assigned to either human resources or accounting. The privatization of building and zoning, we currently have 19 people in the department. Again, this is a model that assumes that there would be two people left in that department. Again, we'll develop specifications with our consultant, our planning consultant, and determine what level of service is most desirable, take bids. One component of the document is that I would like any private sector firm that is bidding this job to make utilization of any employees that were laid off in Troy to be incorporated, to come back to work to us through that company.